I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Switzerland, our nation, where we are in a visible, liberty and justice world.
Mr. McCoslin, please call Rohl.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rohl.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mr. Spicuzzo.
Present.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
Mrs. Dobos.
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you. I'd like to remind the public that you can call in for public comments at 412-851-6911, or you can go onto the website and fill out the Google form for us to read your comments before the meeting. Okay, each year, the school board seeks to recognize some of the outstanding achievements within the Bethel Park School District. Tonight's recognition is of Bethel Park High School's most successful teams and student athletes. As you know, the pandemic wiped out last year's spring sports season, which was obviously devastating to all of the young men and young women who prepared so diligently for so long to compete. That is what makes their success this year especially gratifying. I'd like at this time to introduce our athletic director, Mr. Dan Sloan, to come forward and to make some of those recognitions.
All right, thank you. I want to first thank everyone for having us up here to recognize our student athletes that deserve this honor. This has been a different year academically, athletically, we all know that, but a different year is much better than no year, which these spring student athletes had last year and didn't have their season. So to rebound from a season where they didn't have to the accomplishments that we're about to recognize now, I'm glad that we're able to be standing here and to have them here with us and come on up and introduce themselves. So the first team we'll recognize is our baseball team, who this year won the PIAA championship. Very good season for the boys. They kind of followed the 1988 team's path where they lost the heartbreaker in the Whipple Championships, but were able to rebound and go on to win the state championship last week. So I'd like to introduce head coach Pat Zender to come on up and introduce his coaches and student athletes that are with us today and just tell us a few words on his season.
All right, yeah, hi, everybody. I'm Pat Zender. I'm the head baseball coach here at Bethel Park. First real season that I was able to be a part of and very fortunate to have this great group of guys here and who couldn't make it tonight as well as assisting coaches. You know, they worked so hard all season long and it really is nice when you know all the hard work and all the time and effort they put in to be able to win a championship at the end. Makes it all kind of feel, you know, validates all the work they put in during the regular season. So very thankful and fortunate to have this great group of guys here. Starting down at the corner here, Jimmy Gasper is a senior on the team, pitcher infielder. Sawyer DeAndrea, also a senior.
Come on up as he's introducing you, please.
Yeah, Jimmy Gasper right here. Sawyer DeAndrea, catcher infielder for us as well. Larry Cusson, senior as well, infield and outfield. Zach Sackett, catcher and infielder and outfielder really for us, pretty much does it all. Zach also is one of the guys who had multiple walk-off hits in the playoffs and really came in, you know, performed in clutch situations. Eric Chalice, another senior pitcher outfielder, our ace all year long and going to Kent State and going to do some great things there as well. Jimmy Gasper is going to St. Vincent. Sawyer DeAndrea is going to Bethany. Larry Cusson is going to Davis and Elkins. Zach Sackett at Geneva. So all these guys are continuing to play this great game of baseball at the next level and I couldn't be happier for what they're about to do and I can't wait to follow them at the next step. And then David Kessler is our junior representative here, but he was a team captain this year, carrying the trophy as well and was our starting shortstop and three hitter. And had the walk-off inside the park homerun, or some would call it a triple with an error in the state semifinal game to get us to the championship. So that was obviously a very exciting play, very exciting game. Coach Ranali, he's been a part of this program for a long time, even before I got here as the junior varsity coach, and he's done some great things and works with the outfielders and baserunners and pretty much does everything that you could think of. And I'm very fortunate to have his help this year. He's an encyclopedia of baseball knowledge. And then Kyle Nicholson is our pitching coach and obviously did a great job in our playoff run in our eight playoff games. We didn't let up any more than two runs in any game and that's a testament to our pitching staff and the, you know, the great information and the way that he's able to convey that information to the players and it really made a difference. He played baseball at Texas A&amp;M and got drafted by the Giants. So he knows what he's talking about and I was very fortunate that he was willing to help us out and especially, you know, being my first year, really relied heavily on these two assistants and I can't thank them enough. So thank you, guys, for honoring us.
All right, our next team we'd like to recognize, they did something that no other softball team in the history of Bethel Park ever did, and they won our first Whipple championship in the sport of softball. It was a fun season. They went undefeated throughout and they just did great things, a great group of girls. It was really fun to watch them throughout their season and their playoff run and again, do something that no other team in Bethel Park has ever done on the softball field. So it's fantastic for our 2021 Whipple champion softball team. Joining us via WebEx is Coach Heather Scott, and she is, can you hear us there?
Yep, I can hear you.
Awesome. So we'll have you go ahead and introduce your players and coaches that are here with us and talk a little bit about the season.
All right, first up, I'm going to talk about the two coaches that are there, Donna DeCarlo and Carly Schollenstein. There are, Donna works with our corner players, you know, she does all our bookkeeping and all the odds and ends and Donna's the mother end of our team, keeps everything together. And Carly, she works with our mid infielders, hitting. You know, I can't thank these two ladies enough. And behind me, if you could see, it's my daughter, G. She does all our stats and, you know, just helps out along. And the players we have there, Sandra Soltes, she's our catcher and she was the big hitter of the Whipple game with grand slam and a two-run homerun. So Sandra Soltes. Next up, we have Delaney Circa, our second baseman, who, you know, I can't say enough about her play this season. She, I think she only had like two errors all season, you know, she kept that mid infield along with Reagan, who's unable to be there, you know, together. Then we have our freshman that helped us out, you know, kind of filled in, you know, when we needed runners, outfielders. First one up is Elena Owens. She's one of our backup pitchers. And then we have Savannah Knoff. Savannah filled in for us with, at third base and outfield when we needed her. Belinda Bova. Belinda, again, filled in, you know, whatever we needed, our DP, you know, she played outfield for us as well. And then one of our speedsters on our team is Lupe MacVenny. And that's our group that's able to be there today. You know, I can't say enough about these girls. They worked hard and their hard work and dedication, you know, that's why they're there and were able to make history for the Bethel Park School District and for the community. And one, I want to congratulate the boys on the state championship and I want to thank the community. It was really cool watching the games as we kept winning, winning, more and more, you know, people kept coming out to our games. So I know at the Whipple championship, we had tons of people, it was exciting. So also, I want to thank you guys for having us and letting us represent tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, girls, and congratulations. That gives our two teams that brought home Whipple and PIAA championships, the next three individuals we're going to talk about, you know, were able to do things on an individual basis and bring home a Whipple championship. And the first one I want to bring out here and recognize is Megan Malecki, one of our pole vaulters, and Coach Mark Jacobs. Come on up. Megan won the Whipple championship in pole vault this year, and I'll have Coach Mark Jacobs talk a little bit about her season.
Thank you. First, congratulations to softball and baseball for amazing seasons. Megan, so what can I say about her? Not only did she win the Whipple championship, she set and reset our school record four different times this year in the pole vault. For those of you who don't know, she improved it by a foot, where one inch is like a mile. So the fact that she improved it by a foot is just amazing. Her work ethic, determination, like they said, she lost her junior year because of COVID, but most people don't know, she lost her sophomore year because of an injury. So going into this year, she had not competed at an outdoor meet since she was a freshman. So she went on to win the WPL title because of her work ethic, determination, and overall student of the event. Pole vault is one of the most technical things in all of sports and she took that to heart, constantly practicing, watching film of herself and others to see where she could improve on. Always willing to listen to advice from others, when a lot of people would be like, no, I know what I'm doing, I'm not changing anything. She was never willing to do that. During COVID, she built stuff in her backyard to practice. She even told me one time that her mailman thought she was going to pole vault in the middle of her street when he was delivering the mail. So she really has that work ethic down. And that really paid off at Whipple's. Did not go well for her to start. She missed her first two attempts and in the vault, when you miss three times, you're done. So she was down to one attempt or her career was over. Cleared it, went on, cleared it, I think about, what, five more heights and something like that. Her second best vault ever and it was a four-hour competition and I'll say probably one of the better vault fields I've ever seen. So very proud of you, proud of you for four years. She's going to Millersville, which I cannot wait to see how high you vault there.
All right, our next champion we're going to have come up here is in the sport of rifle. We're going to have Travis come up. Travis's coach is out of town this week, so I'm going to talk a little bit about Travis's season and, you know, my vast knowledge of the sport of rifle. My quick story with Travis, you know, their season this year was much different. You know, they did all virtual meets, you know, they didn't get to compete against teams mono a mono there because of the pandemic and the closeness of the sport of rifle. So a lot of athletes use, you know, the competition next to you to be better. You had to do a lot of internal here motivation to get going. So Travis had a great season that again led to the Whipple championship and, you know, quickly, last year, as my Travis story, is our coach, Coach Benedict, you know, got sick the day of the individual Whipple championships and obviously wanted our team to go. So myself became the rifle coach for the day. Again, vast knowledge of the sport of rifle here. Our coach really that day for our kids that were shooting, our five individuals, was Travis. Travis came along and he was the coach. He was Coach Zeiss there and ready to go and it led, you know, it doesn't surprise me that seeing what he did as his peers were shooting last year, to then come up and win a Whipple championship his senior year was fantastic. So congratulations, Travis. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, our first match this year that was actually in person was Whipple's. Like he said, all of them were online, so the first one that really got into your head was Whipple's. And it was a pretty good match. We also made it to states as a team and I made it to states as an individual. And it was pretty good actually getting to shoot side by side with people, especially because we could sit next to and lay next to those that we were shooting with on our team because we did three per relay. And it was a great time and all, especially individuals, other than making the team stay there a bit too long, but I got the medal out of it, so. Thank you for having me here and if Coach ever hears this, thank you for everything you've done for us and the team, I really appreciate it. You've made me a better person. So thank you, everyone.
All right, our last student athlete champion that I'd like to bring up here is Mia Gorman. Mia's coach also is out of town, couldn't up here, so I'm going to speak a little bit on Mia's season. Mia, in the fall, won the singles girls Whipple championship, third time's a charm as we entered the tournament, right? You know, Mia, I think competed in a fall sport and I think in the fall season, that was the most difficult. You know, we were going into the unknown. We didn't really know what we were getting into yet with everything and the protocols that were in place. Even playing an outdoor sport, you know, we still, I'm sure you all remember what August and September were like, you know, that was really long ago, it seems like it. So, you know, what Mia was able to accomplish, again, mentally, internal motivation when you're out on the tennis court. I've gotten into tennis in recent years, my wife is a tennis player, so I've gotten to knew it and I've gotten to appreciate it now. I really enjoy watching Mia play. Again, I said third time's a charm, she entered the Whipple tournament her freshman, her sophomore years and did advance to the state tournament both years via a third-place consolation win and this year was able to enter that and get over that hump and win the Whipple championship and enter state tournament again, where she went on to the finals of the state championship. So she was a runner-up at the state level as well, so that's another feat that shouldn't not be talked about. So we have big things ahead for her senior year, I think. I'm sure she does lofty goals as well. So I want to congratulate Mia on her Whipple championship. Would you like to say a few words of thank you?
I just want to say thank you and I look forward to doing it again.
And again, just one last thank you to everyone for having us. Again, the recognition for all these individuals is fantastic through a very trying year athletically and academically. So congratulations to you and look forward to next year, enjoy your summers.
Thank you. And finally, we also have, we wish to recognize a very recent Bethel Park alum, Anthony Pousatara, Pousatari, who was recently named the Steel Center Student of the Year. Pousatari, a culinary arts student, was chosen over hundreds of other students. Chef Adam Mica nominated Anthony for the award and said it was an honor to have Anthony as part of his program because he's such a hardworking and dedicated student. Please join us tonight to accept his recognition as the Steel Center for Career and Technical Education Student of the Year, Mr. Anthony Pousatari.
I got to say thanks to mainly my teacher for pushing me and always telling me to do my homework even though I didn't want to. I learned a lot from him. It was really great spending three years under someone that I thought more of a friend than a teacher.
I think we'll be seeing Anthony in a great, proud, prominent restaurant one of these days, Head Chef.
That ends our recognition of the athletes and the student of the year for this particular meeting. Again, congratulations, we are so proud of all of you and good luck in the future. At this time, we're going to have a presentation about the final general fund budget from Mr. McCoslin, our financial director.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to go over the final budget numbers that are on the agenda to be approved tonight and you'll also be setting the millage rate tonight for the next tax year, starting July 1. So tonight's budget features revenues of slightly over 94 million, total expenditures of 94.6. You will be utilizing $642,812 from your fund balance to balance this budget. It does represent a 7.5% increase in spending, however, needs to be noted that a lot of those, that increase is represented through Essers funding, additional Essers funding. If I adjust for the additional Essers funds, the increase is closer to 3.6%. If you have questions during this, just ask away to feel free. This is a three-point, the tax assessment is a 3.5% increase, which is the PDE maximum index increase. The increase will be .7618 mils and it will generate an additional revenue of $1.95 million. Your new tax millage rate then is 22.5272 mils. You can see how much a mil brings in there. A bond mil is about $2.5 million. I did want to note with the tax assessment increases being recommended tonight, that this really is also a recommendation of our external auditors. When they did our audit the last year, we're recommending that we increase the millage to keep pace with the costs and to recover from a tax cut that was done in 1920. So we're still trying to catch up from that cut that was done a couple of years ago. This chart really shows that difference. You went several years without a tax increase and then in 1920, you had a significant cut in the tax rate and then over the last two years, you've been slowly building back to that level. You're still not back quite to the level you were at 2015, 16. So you're still playing a little bit of catch-up from the prior year's lack of tax increases. This gives you a comparison with every school district in the Allegheny Intermediate Unit and you can see that Bethel Park ranks pretty much in the middle of the districts in the county as far as millage rate goes. This is a comparison, we've been doing a lot of strategic planning in the district and we included the school districts that are most similar to us across the state and where our millage ranks in comparison to those districts. You can see that we are the lowest among the comparative districts right now. This is a chart you've seen many times before, nothing new here. This shows all of your revenue sources broken down by local, state, and federal sources and other sources. By and large, the majority of your revenue comes from local sources, almost 70% of your budget is funded locally and of that, the majority of that is from local real estate taxes, a little over $55.5 million from local revenue taxes. Major expenditures, again, nothing new that we haven't talked about in prior budget workshops. Personnel makes up 75% of your budget, or $71 million. That is the salaries and benefits for everyone who is employed by the district. Medical costs are up, rates are up 10%. Piers contributions are going up 4%. You can see the other major expenditures broken down there, debt, tuition, IU services, supplies, and utilities. In this budget, there are several staffing changes that you should be made aware of. The district does anticipate the retirements that are being replaced. There are three teachers, eight paraeducators, a technology director, and the director of pupil services. The district does anticipate retirements, a part-time nurse, a maintenance position, and a mid-year retirement of the assistant superintendent, which are not planned to be replaced. We have done a realignment, as we talked about before, of the security personnel. We'll be eliminating one police position but increasing one security guard. The new realignment does provide security for all of the buildings, all the elementary buildings and the middle school and the high school as well. So every building will have a security personnel stationed at it next year. And then additional positions that are being added, there are two assistant principals at the high school, an assistant athletic director, a director of secondary curriculum, and then two teaching positions are anticipated to be possible hires because we're trying to keep the student-staff ratios at the elementary schools somewhat equitable. We're making some capital purchases in this budget. We have, we're leasing 1,400 new Dell laptops.
Mr. McCoslin, I'm sorry. Dr. Walsh, can you clarify, can you go back?
Sure.
Sure.
The third one on additional personnel.
Director of secondary, secondary curriculum? Right, so the position, the board is entertaining a motion tonight to approve two job descriptions, one for elementary and one for secondary curriculum, or director of elementary education. These are new positions, realigning the central office to divide our, our instructional leadership, curriculum leadership into elementary and secondary positions, and we're going to advertise for a person to come in and take one of, either of those positions, and Mrs. Wells, of course, is existing here in the district, so we're, we're going to find goodness of fit based on the candidates that we received applying for that position.
So it's not technically a secondary curriculum director?
Yeah. I mean, the new, technically speaking, we're going from one curriculum leadership under Dr. O'Rourke and Mrs. Wells to two curriculum leaderships with elementary and secondary orientation. I understand prior to my arrival, this was one of the ways the district had been organized previously.
Correct, but what I'm saying is, we're approving two positions tonight. One may be filled internally, one may not be filled internally. We could possibly be filling two new positions. And then another candidate goes in another situation.
Yep, we'll, we'll see how the candidates shake out.
Capital purchases, we're purchasing fourteen hundred new Dell laptops for students in the high school. We're replacing three hundred Chromebooks at IMS. We are also doing some summer capital improvements with the replacement of cafeteria flooring at NAMs, the replacement of the gym floor at IMS, and installing a new HVAC air handling unit at the IMS gym. We do have long-range plans that are being developed for capital projects so that we can keep, keep things moving toward improvement. We have a number of different items, and I'll be talking about it a little bit later under the capital reserve budget. Also, we have now put in place a replacement cycle to keep technology refreshed every three or four years within the district. Wanted to talk a little bit about the COVID relief funds we've received to date, so that everyone's aware of how that money is being utilized and has been spent to date. We have received a number of different allocations over the last two years. We received the original PCCD grant, PCCD grant for COVID relief in the amount of two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars. We received a smaller grant for Safe Schools under COVID relief in a hundred and fifteen-thousand. A very small grant for pre-K funds, a little under five thousand. Special education mitigation grants at twelve thousand, and then the ESRS one, two, and sometimes it's called ESRS three, but it's really the American Recovery Plan grant, and those amounts were much more substantial. Some of them were in excess of two million dollars. So a total of four point one million dollars that we'll be receiving over the next three years. The next slides kind of break down some of the limitations on how this money can be spent. We do need to remember that these are one-time funds that are used to your budget, they will not be ongoing items. So we are very cautious to use them for purchases that are needed to get us through the, the coronavirus pandemic and then moving forward to make sure that our buildings are environmentally safe and up to date.
Mr. McCoslin, how much of that, the grant money has already been?
We'll go through each one separately. The first one, the PCCD grant, which was two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand dollars, this grant has been spent. Most of it was spent on remote learning software with Schoology and some of the other remote platforms that we used in the last year, and the bulk of it was used for most of our cleaning supplies, our PPE, Plexiglas, those types of things. The Safe School grant, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, this money is spent as well. There was a weight room sanitizer that was put in place so that we could keep the weight rooms clean and sanitized. Again, remote learning software at seventy-two thousand dollars. And then the other ones were some sanitizing, we sanitized the student uniforms for the athletes, and as well, we had to purchase some technology for the non-publics because a portion of that money had to be allocated to non-public schools. The pre-K grant was used for classroom supplies, mainly PPE supplies for the pre-K students. That is all spent as well. The special education mitigation grant is being used for personnel costs. They have, Special Ed Department identified students with measured learning loss over the past year, and they are providing additional tutoring and support services for those students over, that started in the spring and continues through the summer to expend those funds. The ESRS one grant is pretty close to being spent. I think there's still some, some final things that have to come in, but you can see the breakdown of how that hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is being spent. We hired additional bus proctors during the pandemic, additional social workers and SAP liaisons. We purchased some books and book bags for grade K. Additional learning software was purchased. We had a computer intern to assist with online learning software with our teachers. We purchased a, I guess, a touchless remote, like vision screener that we were able to do our vision screening of the students during the pandemic, and the non-publics, again, received a portion of that funding that went toward technology purchases. The ESRS two grant has not been spent. These funds are going to be used for some of the upcoming projects at NAMs relating to the windows, the flooring, the gym floor, as well as IMS's gym floor and air handling units. There are some air chiller replacements, so the bulk of this money is all going to go to building repairs to upgrade HVAC systems for some of our buildings that are in need of some of that desperate repair. We may end up using some of the American Recovery Plan money as well, and I didn't highlight here, but you can see in the slides that when the money has to be spent by, we have through next year to spend ESRS two, and then ESRS three, or the American Recovery Plan grant, we have till 2023 to spend. The one, the one thing that's different about the art money is that twenty percent must be spent on identified learning loss with students. That's why you have the summer education program going on, a lot of the staff, a lot of the supplies, the software that they're going to be using and so on, will be coming out of those funds. We are also going to continue the HVAC upgrades at IMS and NAMs with the additional money. So that's, any questions on the ESRS money and all of how that's going to be spent? Wanted to talk a little bit about this because it's on your agenda tonight as far as committing fund balance. Fund balance has to be committed by board action, and right now, we have a number of different categories where fund balance is allocated, between a legal trust, severances, benefits, tax refunds, and I am recommending to you a slightly different allocation, as you can see in the second column, that we eliminate the tax refund amount. That was probably established back when they did a reassessment of the county, and you probably needed to set some money aside for any significant changes in reassessment. That has now since passed, so that, as well as the benefits amount, I think it's a good idea to put some money in there for severances and benefits that you have contractual obligations to comply with, but I think that the twelve million is probably more associated with PISers increases that were going to occur over years. You have since seen that time pass, and the increases now that we're seeing are much less severe than it was in the prior five, six, seven years. So therefore, I would say it would probably be smart, given where we know we have to go with some of the reparations to the middle school and NAMs, and possibly some of the elementaries, that we perhaps commit more of money to, toward capital projects so that you can avoid borrowing additional money that you don't need to, to complete those projects. I'll open it up for.
I know that when we allocate money into the capital fund balance, we can't touch it. That's not what this is, right?
That's correct. This will stay in the general fund and will be committed by you, and then any board can uncommit it or recommit it for some other purpose, but it doesn't have to necessarily be capital projects. This gives you a little more flexibility to do something with that ten million that if, if the situation changes for you. Once you move money into capital reserve, it must be used for capital projects or a pay-down bond issue.
Okay, thank you.
It cannot be moved back.
So would that capital projects committed fund be a replacement of the capital reserve?
No, it would not. It just gives you, I, I kind of look at it as diversifying your ability to do something with money. It gives you a little more flexibility here. If your needs change in the future, you can reassign it or recommit it for a different purpose. But once you move money to capital reserve, which I think is also a good strategy, and I think you should continue to do that, it has to be used on a capital item or to pay down debt service. It can never be moved back to your general fund. That's, that's school code, so.
So I think this is a good, I mean, this is a great move. We've seen the things that were earmarked for PISers and some of the retirement points. I mean, they haven't been touched in many years, so this is, I think this, this is really aligned with where we have to spend money over the next couple of years, and to your point, Mr. McCoslin, it'll avoid us from having to go out and borrow, whether it's through a bond or through a, you know, additional millage increase or anything like that. So that's a great move. The things that I have been seeing in just the last week, I think, or since we reviewed this last, is that PISers is under federal investigation. Do we, do you see any risk that we may have to start upping our contributions there again because of how PISers have been managed?
I don't see an immediate risk. I think there's a lot of, that's really revolving around the management of the funds and the types of investments they were making. So I'm not sure that financially there's as much concern as how they were managed and how they directed different funds. I don't know that there's a real panic that there's a loss of money there right now, but I think that's really the concern, is looking at that board and how they manage that.
Right, yeah. Well, anyway, earmarking it versus moving it into the capital fund gives us the flexibility on the road anyway if our PISers contributions do go up, but, I mean, they're already at, what, thirty-four percent or something like that?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five, so.
Mr. McCoslin, I do have one question.
Yes.
I'm going to sit back further.
No, it's good.
On an earlier slide, you, you showed a four percent increase in PISers, so as part of that, moving the money and the tax increase, et cetera, did you take the money from the fund that we already had established to pay for that increase of four percent of the PISers money?
I did not.
Is there a reason why we didn't do that?
Um, no, but I, having not a real good idea of what that line item was there for, I wasn't sure whether it was there for PISers or whether it's there to pay your future obligations for healthcare for retirees.
I think it was actually both.
Okay.
But, you know, I mean, we are going to have a tax increase, it appears, so, I mean, if we had some money sitting there that we had allocated for that, I would have expected us to use that money, and I guess that just is a little confusing to me.
That's, that's certainly something that you could do in future years, but it is going to be an ongoing operational item, so it's difficult in those cases where you're going to pay PISers rates year after year. If you use that fund balance for that purpose, it's probably not as prudent. I think when people put that aside, they were trying to build a stopgap so that if they couldn't raise millage enough to keep the pace with PISers, that they would draw in those funds, but at this point, you're able to keep pace with that increased cost. It's probably not a good idea because if that money's gone, then eventually you're building a huge tax increase down the road. So long-term, it's probably better to use that for one-time retirement payouts for retirees that aren't going to continue forever down the road. So that's why I reduced that amount. It's a strategy we'll look at moving forward, but I think when you put money aside or you put it in capital reserve, and I think it's one of the things that we're talking about in strategic planning, we need to have a good five, 10-year plan on how that's going to get utilized.
Obviously, as a, as a board member, and as future board members and past board members, there's, the continuity factor is really difficult to understand, and so what someone might have done previously may not be what's necessary in the future. I get that, but, you know, I just, you know, it just seemed to me that we were taking one side and pushing it to another side. I understand your explanation.
I do understand your point.
When I asked the same, similar question a year or so ago, the response was just what you're saying, and that the increase in the PISers had always been, in a sense, budgeted for within the budget, and then this was the, the stopgap, if, if we needed it, you know, for, for whatever reasoning later on, so it's a similar answer.
Yeah, I really view that benefits line item more for retiree benefits now than PISers increases. Any other questions? Just quickly, there are three line items for assigned fund balance. You have money, this money was originally allocated within the capital reserve fund. If you remember when we spoke with the auditors, it really is not appropriate because these are not capital items, these are operational items, and it's okay to plan for the future purchase of these, but they are now in, in the general fund, in assigned fund balance for the future purchase of copier replacements in the district and for band uniforms in the district. You can see we add to that every year, still at the same level you were adding in prior years. We had a hundred thousand for copiers and five thousand each year for band. The one thing that's dramatically different here there is what you're budgeting for your deficit spending, the drawdown in your budget. Last year, you had almost five and a half million dollar deficit. This year, it's only six hundred and forty-two thousand. The capital reserve fund, very quickly, has a beginning fund balance of nine point seven million dollars. We anticipate transferring in five hundred and five thousand, and we project interest to come up about eight thousand. The expenditures are listed there. We replace, you already approved the purchase of the buses that are going to be replaced for next year. There's some security equipment upgrades with cameras and servers. There's additional architectural services related to the paving projects that we're doing that don't fit into the ESRS model, and fencing at the bus garage, as well as some sign replacement that we spoke about for the admin and IMS school. Those are total expenditures of one point, almost one point two million dollars, which will leave you an ending balance at the end of next year of about nine point one million dollars still in capital reserve.
Doc, where do we put the turf replacement?
I'm sorry, what replacement?
The turf replacement. We had that in the capital fund because we have so many turf fields.
Yeah, it's, it's still sitting in capital reserve in the fund balance. There's still nine hundred and ten thousand dollars sitting for capital reserve for turf replacement. There's still seven hundred and seven, almost seven hundred and seventy-five thousand for bus replacement. We have one point five allocated for paving projects, and then there's another five point nine million that could be used for any other types of replacements. I just listed some items, those aren't specific, but just some idea that there are, there is quite a bit of need to upgrade some of the things in some of your, your middle school, elementary schools, and we're also doing some work at the high school as far as some water issues that exist. And that's it? Questions?
Thank you, Mr. McCoslin. Appreciate the detail. Could I please, at this time, have a motion to adopt the agenda for business items?
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mr. Nagel, seconded by Mrs. Ruhl.
Motion carries.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of five twenty-five, twenty-one?
Motion accepted.
Moved by Mr. Modrak and seconded by?
Second.
Ms. Turner.
Motion carries.
I'd like to announce. At this time, we have Mr. Gian Vargis, who would like to introduce himself. He is the new, one of the new SGA representatives. We had the other one introduce herself, Mia, at our last meeting. Mr. Vargis?
Hi, everyone. My name is Gian Vargis. I am a sophomore going into my junior year this upcoming year, and I'm really excited to work with all of you guys and just take notes. So, thank you.
Thank you. We'll anticipate having you part of the meetings once August begins and student government starts up again. Thank you. Anything for the solicitor's report?
No, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Committee reports at this time. Mr. McGregor, do you want to update us?
Sure. At Pathfinder, they're in summer mode right now. So every summer, they go ahead and evaluate the buildings and come up with, you know, every year types of maintenance projects, as well as tabling some projects that they would like to get to. Of course, with the uncertainties of cost, with, you know, construction materials, everything involved with that. So some of those are in hold right now. But it was a nice productive meeting last week.
Thank you, Mr. McGregor. Mrs. Ruhl?
I'd like to report that the AIU is in the process of hiring a new technology director. The person that they are looking to hire came from Upper Sinclair, and he's been with Lawrence Alleghany in South Park. Comes with good credentials, instructional technology, and as director of the technology department. So he's probably going to be a good resource for us when I look at his credentials to help us out with some of the things we've maybe been encountering. We're also evaluating our director, who hasn't even played less than a year, so we're going through that evaluation process. And also, we're finishing up the strategic planning there. And our new DEI director gave a workshop on equity in the workplace. So that was something new that I'm doing now. I'm looking at Steel Center. We, our Vet Tech program was so successful, we have 40 applicants, we have to close it. So it really is off to a great start. Also, which program was it? Our Vet Tech.
Oh, that's interesting.
And Dr. Walsh and I will be meeting with the director this week. And then we have also the meeting, which we are calling all the superintendents of our schools, which are 12 of them, and the board. And we will be discussing what Steel Center should be looking like, what type of buildings, because it hasn't been really done for 50 years. And you know, programs have changed, and we're adding so many new things. So we need to look at the building and look at the programming. So we will now have all the superintendents and the board together, which will be a real interesting meeting. But that'll happen this month also. So that's it for Steel Center. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fierce and I participated in a meeting this afternoon for One Pittsburgh, One Tree Pittsburgh. And we've already planted trees at Neil Armstrong in this past spring that are in the process of starting to grow already. And the plan is for more trees to be planted in the fall at Memorial. I believe there's 47 trees to be planted on the border of the ball field.
Correct. Correct, somewhere in that range.
Between the ball field and the residential area.
Yes.
And then the next one is at IMS. There's a variety of trees going to be planted at Memorial. But at IMS, there are going to be pitch pine trees that are right above the softball field, between the softball field and IMS parking lot. And those are actually already slated for either October or November to be planted.
The primary date's in October. The rain date is November 9, I believe.
Yeah. And then there are 76 more trees that they have to plant. And we're trying to decide, as the Shade Tree Commission, whether they're going to be on school district property or municipal property in one of the parks. But it's been a very successful program so far, and we're excited to work in conjunction with One Tree Pittsburgh. The Recreation Board has been meeting, and a couple of dates I'd like to announce. There are going to be flea markets this year at Christ United Methodist Church, and they are on the third Saturday of every month. The fireworks show occurs this weekend on June 26. You cannot travel to Millennium to be at the park, but there are lots of locations around that area where you can watch the fireworks from, including Lowe's and St. Germain's Church and Cool Springs and different places like that, that you can go and look and watch the fireworks as they're, it's a 25-minute show. There's also plans being made for the Community Day parade, which is going to be on Saturday, September 25. So you can mark your calendars for that. And I think there are projects going on throughout the district, throughout the borough, for the parks to be, have improvements made to the equipment in all of the different parks and so forth. And that's an ongoing process. And the car cruise intended to help the Recreation Department this year is not going to be in conjunction with Community Day. It's going to be on September, Sunday, September 5. I think it's called Rev 'Em Up. And that's all I have from the Rec Board. Anybody have any other committees that you want to report on? Okay, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Mrs. Dobbs. Good evening, everyone. Three things for my part of the agenda tonight. But before I get into them, I just want to say what a great way to open the meeting with the students and high achieving scholars, as well as athletic achievements and championships. It was a nice way to open the meeting, and we should, we should do that more often, shouldn't we? State champions and Whipple champions and any other great things that our kids are doing. And we probably could, every month, have a group like that in here for the great stuff that we see happening. One of the items on the personnel part of the agenda tonight is accepting the retirement of one of our administrators. And so if you'll indulge me a moment, I'd just like to share with you some of the achievements of Lori Sutton, who is retiring as our Director of Special Education. Lori started with the district in 2003. She was the Assistant Director of Special Ed, and she was then promoted to the Director's position in 2013 and still remains in the job. Over the years, Lori was instrumental in writing of grants, helping with crisis management, programming, supporting students in early college enrollment, working with the process of yearly Miranda Award, and participated in multiple events at Pathfinder, Aubrey, Watson, just to name a few of our related service providers. She's a great educational leader, a powerful advocate for kids, and we missed wishing her a long and happy retirement. Number two, I wanted to give the board, although most of you would know from your firsthand experience, that the strategic planning process is well, very well underway. We're now working in subcommittees. Each of the subcommittees is charged with focusing on three to five goals, long-range goals, for the district to focus on over the coming three to five years. We anticipate that the committee work will wrap up towards the end of summer, at which point we'd like to kind of coalesce those goals and get some community survey input on which of those goals would be the highest priority for us to focus on. And then the board should have this plan ready for approval by early fall in October, public posting and approval in November. It's what the best part about the process is the amount of community involvement already in place. Each of the subcommittees has students, staff, and community members participating with input, feedback, and that will continue again and expand to the larger community for a survey towards the early part of the fall. And finally, we have two staff members and Dr. Awk, who are going to talk to us about some committee reports. The board knows that each year, we engage certain departments, certain levels in analysis of our curriculum programming. The departments kind of spend that year studying to a self-study and benchmarking and data analysis and deep dive into their programs. In the orange folders at your tables would be the written reports from the committees that had been meeting this year. Dr. Awk will speak to those written reports and then introduce our faculty that will talk through their part of it.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. This year, starting in January, we had the opportunity to meet with a committee of teachers K through 12 for science and social studies. As they had worked on Fridays, they were able to establish standards that they wanted to, that we needed to address through that process, and then also a review of, similar to what we would be doing with our strategic plan of looking back, looking around, and looking forward, and making sure that what we are providing our students as we move forward is meeting the needs of our students in preparation of whatever is next. With that being said, I'll speak first of our science committee. Our science committee met on Fridays. With me today is Mrs. Walsh and Mrs. Esposito. Both of them are elementary teachers, and Mr. Cristofano is online as a high school facilitator for science to answer any questions that you might have with their process. Basically, what each group had done is, we met all together as a K through 12 committee, and then broke off by levels, elementary K through four, middle school five through eight, and then the high school nine through 12, that we would come back periodically and touch base with one another and then move forward. The elementary program reviewed different opportunities. We had used Asset Science in the past. If the board doesn't remember that, Asset was a kit-based program that was refurbished each year, and it was, we rented those kits. Asset left that part of their business two or three years ago, I believe, and we have been, we were piecemealing those at that point in time. So I'll let Mrs. Esposito and Mrs. Walsh speak a little bit about their process and the recommendation that they are bringing to the board as we move forward with the elementary program.
I'm Patty S. Dino. I teach third grade at Lincoln Elementary School. And this is Barbara Walsh, and Barbara teaches in the fourth grade at Washington.
You might have to take your mask off. We really can't hear you.
Lots of times. And we had Amy Luzader, a fifth grade teacher, and Brittany Thomas, who is our secondary teacher. And we worked real well together as an elementary science committee. Our recommendation, we would like to recognize Smithsonian Science for the classroom. We did look at other programs. We spent a lot of time, especially on Fridays, but we spent a lot of time looking at programs and really meeting with representatives from those programs. We looked at Foss, Amplify, Inspire, and we really liked the Smithsonian. We got to pilot it. What I thought was nice about, from a science perspective, we were looking at the NGS standards. Everything was aligned with NGS standards. And lucky for us, I thought, because those are the standards, everyone that we looked at, when we looked at Foss, when we looked at Amplify, they were all pretty much the same, the same concepts, the same ideas. So you really got to compare them on kind of a, you know, uniform or level platform. So we really liked the Smithsonian, and that is our recommendation. It reflects real-world practices of scientists and engineers. The students work towards explaining phenomena or designing solutions for problems. It's very hands-on.
You've got to tell them. They can't hear you online. So I don't know if that might, I don't think that microphone's working very well. Can you hear?
Sorry, I just got three texts. It is a hands-on program. It is a kit-based program. So very, back to the hands-on science. I had an advantage. I got to pilot the Forces in Motion, and we had the same program through our Foss kit. So I really got to compare those head to head and was very happy with Smithsonian. It's hands-on. Their digital resources are wonderful, very user-friendly, just a great resource. The modules are organized into four topical strands, life science, earths in space, physical science, and engineering design. I don't know. We just, we really liked it, spent a lot of time. I got to pilot the entire Forces in Motion module, and the kids really had fun, really, doing science, even in this COVID environment. We were able to pull that off.
So we've had people ask us about the science program at the elementary school and how much time is given to that. Is there a recommendation to increase the time for science?
I don't think that we had a recommendation to increase or change the time. I don't know where the time would come from, to be honest. What we typically have done is we teach social studies and science, social studies or science. That's usually that same timeframe as far as when we turn in our minutes as our scheduling. So I didn't, we didn't recommend to change it, just keep it.
So there's an allocation for that time in every school, the same amount of time for every grade level or whatever?
I don't know if the allocation is the same in every grade level, but it is those required minutes per grade level. I think they change per grade level. It's about 40 minutes. We do, in third grade, about 40 minutes a day of social studies or science, and we kind of bounce between the two. And usually, that's at the teacher's discretion. Some teachers will teach two or three days of a social studies and the other two or three days of the science, where other teachers have chosen to teach social studies for a few weeks and then into science and then back to social studies. So we didn't change, we did not recommend or change the way that we've done that.
Okay, but it's reassuring to us to hear that it's being taught, because at one point, we thought that it wasn't being taught.
Yes, we're excited about it.
Great.
I think, I think what you were getting to is, is that time, I know it's allocated on a daily basis for four minutes. Is any part of that time ever used by other programs to pull kids from your classrooms?
Can you ask that again?
Where, was any of that amount of time that they're supposed to be learning about science or social studies used to pull kids from the classroom to do other activities?
Or should we have? No, no. I, gosh, in third grade, I don't have to deal with the band schedule, but I'm not aware that we ever pulled from those.
Okay. So it may be a building by building in grade level.
Correct, correct.
Discussion.
And to add to that, there's also time, we integrate with our language arts as well. So the science is also included through some of the language arts. There is integration there.
Thank you. So to that point, some of the stuff I've read in the past, and I wanted to get your feel on this, is that ELA in math is taught sometimes more effectively through social studies and science because it's more studies and science because it's more relatable to the children. It's more real and like hands-on, so to speak, or tangible things. First, I'd like to get your thoughts on that, and then second, my understanding is that the Wonders program actually incorporates a lot of that through, a lot of the social studies and science through Wonders.
It does. Certainly, we talk about space, we talk about monuments and history, Oregon Trail in third grade in particular. So it is definitely addressed there. Through this science program, though, they get to really experiment and get their hands on with things, so.
So, so back to the, like, the first part of the question, do you think more time dedicated to this and more consistency among the schools and grade levels for that time may help with the other subjects?
I would always love more time. I don't know where it comes from, to be honest. If you ask me for each of my subjects, I would love more time for ELA, I would love more time for math. I have been very successful with the time that we have for our social study science, and there's always that little wiggle room where you can pull from things at different times of the day, whenever you need more time. So the time that we have had has been enough.
Did you have a representative from each of the elementary schools at the grade level that you're talking about to review this, or how did this work?
We, there was representative from each grade level, but not from each elementary school of each grade level.
Oh, okay. So the other elementary schools at your grade level don't really know about this, or do they? I guess we're talking about trying to get some consistency among all the buildings.
The way that the committees, sorry, Mrs. Walsh, the way that the committees run is that a posting is put out, and then people that are interested can volunteer. In the case of science and social studies that we've done recently, we accepted everybody that volunteered. So whoever was in that, in that volunteer round, we didn't get as many volunteers as we would like. What happens at the next level is we go through this process. If this, the committee is the one that is driven to make a decision, then that is given to the, the staff development and the professional development and the introduction of the content and the materials then become part of the teacher's practice starting next year from every grade level at each building. So the consistency becomes, the curriculum then gets written, the resources are listed, and then no matter what elementary school the kids are attending, they then are using that curriculum. There is a time, need all the time in a teacher's classroom to make some decisions on how and what they, how they teach to some degree, but there's required documents and required materials that are used, and then they supplement.
But how is that process different than what we have followed in the past?
It's not. It is not.
It's the same process, right?
Correct.
Well, the one piece that, let me interject, there is a piece that would happen, Dr. Awork, after the board has a chance to review these pieces. There are some things that we're going to need their approval for purchase. And then we also post for a curriculum writer, an author to write the curriculum over the course of a year. Then it becomes part of, they accept it or they adopt it curriculum in the district. So after you've had a chance to review these reports, we'll come back to the board in July for some approvals of some of the recommendations that are in there.
Okay.
And then we'll post for curriculum writers at each of those grade levels to write the scope and sequence of those science kits and the other materials that are on the agenda for approval.
Yeah.
So you're not approving anything tonight because you're just getting these reports?
Sure.
But we'll be back to you in July for that next step.
Okay. No, I mean, my question before was, you know, I just want to understand the process because, you know, we've been talking a lot and becoming a lot more aware that we actually lack consistency across, you know, and part of it's a challenge because we have so many buildings. So I guess, you know, maybe that's something we can address in the final curriculum proposal is how we develop a little bit more consistency across buildings, across classrooms, you know, at the same grade level.
I think, I think, and the teachers could speak to a little bit of this, I think when we adopt new curriculum, as we've gone through, the consistency begins, the teachers are very consistent, but as the years progress and when we've done the last adoption, people sway. In this particular case with science, Asset pulled the rug from underneath of us for all practical purposes, and then we did not, we piecemealed and didn't address it. So the inconsistency of science and social study, and science in particular for the last few years was blatant just because we did not move forward with any committee work. I feel confident that as this group and the group beyond me continues to develop those things as a curriculum, and then the principals making sure that what is being taught in the classroom, so we make a help with that consistency as we move forward.
So, and one additional question on this, so, you know, when you look at STEAM, you know, is there a way to maybe capture a little bit more, you know, science and math throughout the curriculum, you know, by, you know, adopting some STEAM principles? I think you mentioned, like, you know, Oregon Trail was an example, but can we really be successful incorporating a larger STEAM approach into the curriculum without kind of evaluating all the curriculum at the same time? I mean, how does, how would that happen?
We had, historically, in 2014, 15, we had a STEAM committee that actually was meeting at that time and made some recommendations, and it didn't move forward. However, this group, in their process of looking at the science, also looked at the STEAM kits, and their recommendation is to purchase those STEAM kits so the elementary schools will develop STEAM days and integrate into what they are currently doing. Right now in our elementary schools, a lot of our STEAM activities are being conducted with our librarians, our media specialists with the kids, where they are incorporating computer science and STEAM into library science. But I think with this additional recommendation, that is going to get embedded in to our curriculum even further. And as I believe Mr. Nagel had said, with the connection to the non-fictional text in our ELA series with Wonders, and Mrs. Esposito also spoke of it, there are connections that are cross-disciplinary, which deepens the learning of our students as we move forward.
Okay. But I'm just wondering if that, and again, this isn't, you know, criticism, just some thoughts of, you know, that approach seems to be like an accidental approach to STEAM versus a deliberate approach to STEAM. And I'm just wondering, how do you actually get STEAM into the curriculum without kind of evaluating all the curriculum?
Well, there, as Dr. Awork was saying, there was a STEAM committee. I was the board liaison on that committee, and then it was kind of disbanded. So that's science, but there can be a STEAM curriculum committee K through 12 to do exactly what you're talking about in, in the future and so forth. I don't, I don't think it's been, it's not been in effect for like two years, right?
It is not. And a lot of our, a lot of the, our neighboring schools with the integration of STEAM have made that a STEAM coordinator, you know, that has moved forward. I know that was, that was part of the recommendation at the time, was to kind of incorporate that, have STEAM as almost a extra special, so to speak, is what we had, a group, I don't know if these ladies were involved, but we had gone and visited Safiyet, we had gone and visited Elizabeth Forward and a couple others in making that direction. I think that that's definitely, maybe, something that'll come out of the strategic plan that the district definitely can improve upon without a doubt.
There's no doubt, I think this board here, we've shown that, you know, we're more focused on improving our education. You're right, that was in place, and like Dr. Awork said, two, three years ago, it kind of took the wayside, but as we come with our plan, strategic plan in, our educational goals, maybe that takes again to the forefront.
STEAM has come up also in the curriculum subcommittee, so we've discussed that too. It's been a common thread among some people in the group, K through 12. So we're working on that. Hopefully, we can get to that.
You know, maybe it's, maybe it's a broader focus of this science curriculum review, but, you know, maybe that should be some of the actual, you know, outcomes of the committee is how to inject that into other parts of the curriculum, because, you know, I think we need to be deliberate. Otherwise, you know, our approach so far has been, you know, which I think is the exact opposite of what STEAM is supposed to be, is to evaluate STEAM as a singular function, and that's not what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be more integrated across the curriculum, and so the only way you can do that is to evaluate your whole curriculum, I think. So maybe this is an opportunity to, you know, make some recommendations of how science could be incorporated into the parts of the curriculum or math.
That's our wish. That's our wish.
Yes.
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 So with that, with that being said, going on to fifth and sixth grade, if I could-
Can we ask one? I just, one more question. I have one, too. So on the third page, under your recommendations, it doesn't really outline this scope and sequence, and I'm, it looks like kindergarten is only going to do it if it's a full-day program, and first and second grade is optional. So can you sort of explain what that, what those words mean? Or what that, I mean, is this a program K through four that you're talking about? Or is this something that's going to be optional in grade one and two? Or is that just STEM and not the Smithsonian? Do you understand my question?
Yeah, I, did you want to address it, or would you like me to?
If you're, the STEM is the optional part of that.
So that's not the Smithsonian scope and sequence that we're adopting K through four?
One through four.
Oh, one through four?
Yeah.
And science, science currently is, is a one-through-12 curriculum. Science is, is standalone in kindergarten. It is not-
I just was, I was curious because I was reading optional and ifs and so forth. So that, the bullets there are the optional part, but what we're actually going to implement is the Smithsonian scope and sequence, which is not this STEM thing. Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that for my own purposes.
Dr. Walsh, I have a question. On the, for the curriculum writing process that you mentioned a little bit ago, when someone is, I guess, selected or comes forward to write the curriculum, let's say for third grade, it's third grade science, are they all alone in writing this curriculum? Or is it, or do you, is it a team of third grade teachers kind of coming together where there's input? Like, what is the, what is that process? Or is that teacher, that single teacher individually writing and building that curriculum?
Good question. I confess to you, I have a kind of heart of that.
It can be either and both. It depends on how many teachers want to step forward and share it.
Yeah, and typically in the past, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Skelso, it was more individualized, though I know that, especially at the elementary level, they would write and then share, but it really was ultimately a responsibility of one teacher was the writer of the curriculum.
And then, so one teacher would do it, and then everyone would follow suit? With-
I think, I think, I think it's a little bit of where you, where the inconsistency comes. They, it's written.
I think that process should be, in my opinion, should be changed. I think if you have more buy-in and more commitment from multiple teachers in the same grade level, they feel that they are a part of it. They're building it. It's theirs. They own it. So I think that might help with consistency in the future.
I think that's, I think that's something that has been discussed. It's contractual, the process in which we use now, and it being an individualized teacher is a contractual thing, but I think that there's dialogue definitely to improve that with the, both, on both sides of the table there, what the administration would like to improve the process in which we develop curriculum, as well as the Federation and the implementation of the curriculum.
It's just different, like, when somebody hands you something and you're like, okay, good, just do this, versus if all five of you have committed yourselves to something, you all have your hands in it, it's part of who you are, each of you, and then it becomes more of a living, breathing, like, document that you're all on board with. It's a, it's a team mentality, and I think that's how you build that culture and that mentality, and then you get that continuity with it as well. So hopefully, we can work on that in the future here.
Dr. Walsh, my other concern here says that we recommend modular-specific training during professional development days on August 20th in the PM and November 2nd in the AM, which means we're giving first through fourth grade roughly, I don't know how many, if we have three per school, you know, these kits and a book and nothing else. I have large concerns about, here you go! Large!
Yeah, I got you. We got, the days we have are the days we have, though. You know, there's only so many slices of pie when it comes to in-service days.
Yeah. That's the recommendation of the, go ahead.
To speak to that, I, I was trained on the physical science kit in one session, and it was enough for that kit. So when we have the date in November, the expectation would be that that kit hasn't been used yet until you've been properly trained on it.
Again, that goes back to the consistency across the buildings and when teachers are teaching it and how it's being taught. And, you know, some people do it three days a week, while others don't do it to the whole second quarter. That needs to be addressed.
Okay. Just one more, this is just a suggestion, really. So as you develop your final set of recommendations for this, if you could also provide just a little bit of kind of what the expected outcomes are? Because, you know, I see the recommendations, but it's not obvious to me. I can make some assumptions, but it's just not obvious to me, kind of the why. What are the, what are the outcomes we expect from making these changes?
Not, I need to tell that you two and these two other ladies did great work because I have seen a pilot of the Smithsonian in another school district. But my concern is, and it's the concern, I believe, of most of my colleagues on this board, that is inconsistent how it is done at each school level. And if we're going to implement a new program, and there could be the possibility of students moving per grade next year, so we're in this school, but we find a new house like has been going on all this academic year, they may miss something, and that's a large concern, I think, on a lot of our parts. So the consistency through this program is totally needed right now.
So moving forward with the middle school, five, six, seven, eight, the fifth and sixth grade, under the direction of Mrs. Hoovy, who was, who is the science teacher there, piloted a different program and was not positive about it, and has requested to work further into next school year with the fifth and sixth grade with Mrs. Evans, who is the facilitator for science through, for five through eight. Mrs. Evans and her team at seven, eight are making the recommendation to maintain their, their curriculum and the content in which they teach at this point in time, and using the materials in which they have as they are updated. The materials that they currently have are updated on a cycle, and they also use Study Island Science in preparation for the Keystone Exam beyond grade seven, when the kids take the PSSA science. So that's, that's the, the middle school recommendation. And then Mr. Cristofano, who is online with us, I believe, has made some recommendations to update some of the high school science program and curriculum there. So, Mr. Cristofano, if you would go ahead and review a little bit of this, give a summary of your work with the high school.
Certainly, and thank you very much for inviting me tonight. Our committee at the high school, nine through 12, was myself, Mrs. Randy Dirmus, Mrs. Andrea Stillmack, and as the moment her maternity leave was over, Mrs. Barron. So the four of us met Fridays, on the asynchronous Fridays in the morning. We did our classes in the afternoons. We began our work on March 5th, and one of the things that we were tasked with doing is taking a look at the upcoming Pennsylvania state standards, which haven't been updated in quite a while. Pennsylvania state standards, which haven't been updated in quite a while. In anticipation of those state standards taking effect soon, one of the things that we first did was, we sent out a survey to all the teachers at the high school. And we asked them to compare the curriculum as it is written out versus looking through the lens, if you will, of these upcoming new proposed state standards. And the idea of that survey, of course, was to identify the strengths and weaknesses and the opportunities that's in the current curriculum, and to evaluate whether, you know, for instance, at what level our curriculum meets or does not meet those standards. And so we sent out the survey, we gave the teachers some time to complete that, follow-up meetings, the committee met, and we went through those. We have on the order of, I believe it's 17, high school science classes that we offer. And at this stage of the committee, because we began our work on the first week of March, and the biology folks were concerned about those Keystone Exams we had to take this year, and just the, obviously, just the craziness with the remote learning, we identified some courses that we feel very comfortable with, we feel that have actually well met the proposed state standards that should be approved shortly. But we also identified some courses where we would probably want to take more time to look more in-depth at more resources and pilot that. So what the committee finally did, when the committee worked, when our meetings ended in May, I believe, May 12th, I want to say, was to create a document that we named a midpoint review, because we feel the work of our committee is not finished either, that we would like an opportunity in the fall to explore additional resources from additional vendors, additional open education resources and so on. And, and to that point, I will, I will bring up, for instance, Apex Learning, something that we are using in our summer school program, will be available to us, I believe, in the coming school year. Now, our committee had no idea of that. So that, this is going to be a great opportunity for us to reconvene the committee in the fall, to take a look at those resources as well and integrate those. So that's just something new that's come up. So I do not know what you have in front of you document-wise, but perhaps you have a copy of the midpoint review, which lists some of the courses that we had time to evaluate and the committee felt comfortable making recommendations at this point, and the work will continue with the others. So with that, if you have any questions?
So the recommendations for the midpoint review, the three areas that we have in front of us, all recommend certain textbooks, and that's what you're recommending for us to purchase this summer?
Yes, at your convenience. So for instance, if you want to go through line by line, for instance, our physics course, we're comfortable with the existing textbook, because that course has a lot of teacher-made resources and open education resources that we currently use. So that course, we feel, maybe you could call that one done and dusted. The honors physics class, for instance, I, I would just, in general, our textbooks are usually by copyright 2008, 2009. So as the remote schooling and the pandemic has shown us, you know, the importance of having some kind of online component that goes with your learning was, would certainly be key. And of course, our current offerings were old enough not to have any of that available. So a lot of our recommendations are based on, not so much buying a textbook per se, but entering this world of the online resources that, you know, again, my, my kids are in college and all of their stuff was online. And so, so if you look at the honors physics, for instance, you know, there's an online component that goes with the textbook web assign. If you look at the environmental science program, at the honors and the regular level of environmental science, same thing. Lots of, you know, updated material in the textbook, of course, the online components as well. The AP classes, we're very comfortable with, because firstly, we follow the AP National Curriculum, because the AP exam is so tied to that curriculum. And those textbooks were renewed, I want to say, two years ago. So that purchase has already been made two years ago, so we consider that done as well. As terms, in terms rather of, for instance, our science nine class, that's going to take a little bit more of, again, just, just the time, as Dr. Walsh mentioned, you can only carve up so much time. You know, we, we really need to spend a lot of time with the IMS books to make sure we are making a very good and smooth transition from eighth grade to ninth grade science. The biology, especially because it's tied to the Keystone Exams, which are reflected in our school, well, the old-school performance profile, what it's called now. But, you know, that's, that's something that we want to take a look at, as well as the additional courses. So that is, that is essentially the, the gist of our report.
Thank you, Mr. Cristofano.
That concludes the science piece. In your folder as well, you have information concerning social studies.
I do have a question.
Sure.
What is science nine? I mean, when you're looking at, I'm curious, you have biology, you have chemistry, you have.
Is your microphone on?
I'm sorry. It is on.
Mr. Cristofano can answer that.
Could you please explain science nine? What, what is, is it integrated? What's all, is it a mix, a blend?
Yes. Science nine is a, is a very interesting course, because it has a component, especially one that's important to the Keystone Exam, which is ecology. Part of the Keystone anchors, I don't know the percentage offhand, I could look, but some of that is covered in ecology. And so what we do is we teach that in science nine to great extent, which allows only the biology teachers just to kind of revisit that concept along with everything else in preparation for the Keystone Exam and so forth. But it also includes things like the physical sciences and the processes on the earth, weather and erosion, weather, climate, and so on and so forth. There is a unit on astronomy, which includes cosmology and seasonal observations and so on and so forth. There is, let's see, it's a, a lot of the first nine weeks unit, I believe, is almost, like, almost a basic physics kind of a class, that really gets you used to using scientific method, that gets you used to using lab skills. And in the process of the first nine weeks teaches a lot of physics concepts, work, energy, thermodynamics. These are all the foundational ideas at a freshman level, if you will, kind of a, kind of a 101 level, if you will, for the courses that are about to come. So for instance, when we do some thermodynamics in the ninth grade, and we talk about heat experiments and heat flow and energy flow, they will definitely see that again in their chemistry and physics classes in years to come. So in a way, ninth grade is a really wonderful, varied, it's not a single 18 weeks of physics, 18 more weeks of physics. It's really kind of chunked into some very nice nine to 12-week units that introduce you to many, many broad areas of science. And from, from my opinion, I really enjoy the curriculum, because I think it, it really exposes the students to a lot of the different areas that are in science. It's not just a dedicated physics kind of an approach. It also includes earth processes, volcanoes, and earthquakes, and so on and so forth.
So it's, overall, it's, it's pretty much more of a blend of all of the earth sciences, like a little bit of astronomy, a little bit of meteorology, could be geology.
Yes, and the physical sciences as well, which is concepts and thermodynamics and so on, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So with the social studies, there's more work to be had. I wanted to share with you the reports as they stand currently. Social studies at the elementary level, they're doing a nice crosswalk between the wonders program and social studies concepts that the standard's there to integrate to some degree. At the five through eight, the middle school, once again, the seven, eight middle school, once again, says that they're okay with their current resources. We want to explore it a little bit further, as you can see in their document. And at the nine through 12, they've, Mr. Dean Perperiou has submitted a report, and a part of that is the course, that the diversity course, leadership course that was developed and moving forward there. But there still is some foundational work that, with the social studies, that we will go into the fall and continue to work on. But I wanted you to be aware of, you know, where they're at currently, as we conclude this school year and the work that the committee's done. Any questions? I want to take an opportunity to thank the lady sitting beside me, as well as Mr. Cristofano, for coming this evening and being available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks.
Did the assessment committee also?
I was just going to address that.
Oh, you were?
Yes. Thank you. So we, we also had one additional committee formed in the spring to consider a benchmarking assessment system. Hopefully, we, we can move this into place for our elementary and middle school classes. Would be a three times a year benchmark assessment to get national, state, and local norms on student growth. There are reports in the folder. And again, you'll have proposals from, from the administration on the July agenda for consideration to adopt. And that was all I had for my part of the agenda, Mrs. Dobbs. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I don't see any public comments on the response form, and I have reached out to Ms. Gregg to find out if she sees any, she doesn't either. Do we have any phone calls?
There are no phone calls.
Okay, we have 30 items on the consent agenda. Is there any item there that anybody would like to be held out? Okay, I'd like for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Ms. Turner and seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo. Questions, comments on the consent agenda? These are all the things that we talked about last week during the committee meeting that we decided we can put on the consent agenda and approve all at once.
Voting is open.
Thank you. Mr. McGregor, Personnel Committee, please take each one individually.
Okay, there are eight items under Personnel. First one is the ratification of the Bethel Park Custodial and Maintenance Education Support Personnel Association.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Scialzo. Comments or questions about this? I'm just happy to report that we have a contract that we are signing tonight with our custodial maintenance crew, and we're looking very, we're very excited. Do you want to make any comments, Mrs. Dobo?
Yeah. I would echo Mrs. Dobo's comment that we're pleased that we were able to achieve resolution of the contract. Hats off to negotiating team for PSEA. It was a positive process overall, so.
Okay, any other comments or concerns?
Voting is open. Okay, number two under Personnel Committee is the appointment of personnel. I know Dr. Walsh and Mr. Causel, they kind of touched upon this in their prior discussions with all of us. So any comments, concerns?
I need a second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen.
Do you want to go over the, the items?
Mr. McGregor, would you like me to walk you through those motions?
Yeah, that'd be great.
So there's two sections there. The first is administrative postings. The board agreed to opening of two high school administration positions, assistant principals, closing one of the deans of student positions. So you have appointments for two candidates tonight to be assistant principals. The first, Diana Francek, is a veteran administrator from a local school district, is looking to come to Bethel Park and bring with her lots of experience on social, emotional learning, counseling, student support services. And Mark Porcinski is a veteran principal, experienced from the Sonaco Valley School District, who is coming back into the business of education with 13 years of leadership experience at the principal levels, looking to bring all that knowledge to support our high school. And the second section is the classified staff, which is our school security positions. The board was given detailed information about an analysis of our school safety plans and programs, restructuring of the police force and the school security guards, so that we will now, with this approval tonight, will have an officer or a security guard in each of the eight buildings on our campus, as well as evening coverage at the high school and IMS.
Thank you, Dr. Walsh. Any other comments or questions?
Just a question, and again, we are still posting for higher additional.
Security or?
Security.
Yes.
Yes. Voting is open. Okay, our third item is the approval of the 2021-22 salaries for Act 93 administrators.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen.
Comments or questions? This is governed by our contract called Act 93 with our administrators.
Voting is open. Okay, number four is the approval of the 2021-22 salaries for non-administrative groups.
Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. Comments or questions on this?
Was the additional person added? Because I'm not seeing.
It's added to executive content. We'll update the file tomorrow, but we put the, put the information in executive content.
I did.
Stipulated then.
Huh?
We'll stipulate it then. The increase for the, is the same as the other classifieds. They, they're governed by an agreement.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, comments?
Okay, number five here, employee settlement agreement and release.
Need a second. Seconded by Mr. Nagel. Questions or comments? Questions or comments?
Voting is open. Motion carries, nine, oh.
Number six is the approval of extra duty responsibility programs for 2021-2022.
Need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spicuzzo. Any comments or questions? Okay.
Voting is open. Motion carries, nine, oh.
Okay, number seven is the approval of summer help for the custodial maintenance department.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. Any comments or questions?
I'm gonna go back and ask this question. I know at one point in time we were looking for some interns. Are they under this category, or would they be something different? And where are we on that?
So we hired a business intern. Nick and I have been working with PTI to figure out if we can get a intern, but this summer help is not an intern because it's not a college student. It is a student that just graduated, I believe.
Correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
So this will just be not classified as an intern. But we are still working with PTI to try to find one for the maintenance department.
Thank you.
Voting is open. Motion carries, nine, oh.
Okay, our final item under Personnel is number eight, the approval of job descriptions. I do know Dr. Walsh did discuss this earlier.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nagel. But would you continue to explain the restructuring?
Sure, so we have, with some retirements in the district office, with a resignation of our tech director, we have an A4 and an opportunity to revisit this organizational structure, getting goodness of fit from our admin team to continue to grow the district and find our next best. So these are, one of them is just a restructuring of an existing position for Dr. Jen Sammy's position, adding some additional focus on facilities oversight of that department and overseeing the capital projects. The other two are two new positions that'll be created out of existing positions for curriculum leadership. We're calling them Director of Secondary and Director of Elementary Ed. We're gonna need one person out of one of those, for those two positions. We already have someone in-house to fill the other one, so we're gonna advertise as a curriculum person and see who we get and goodness of fit into those two positions, and then we'll take our internal person and fill the other one.
Any comments or questions?
I have concerns about the, we'll talk about it later.
Any other comments or questions? These are just job descriptions.
Correct, exactly. These are just approving the positions, which essentially kind of creates the structure we're looking for internally.
Voting is open. Motion carries, nine, oh.
Thank you. Mr. Spicuzzo, Facilities and Services?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Dobbs. There are eight items under Facilities and Services Committee this evening. Would anyone, like any of them held out separately? Or do you want to vote them individually, or do you want to vote them as a group?
I've got a couple of questions on a couple of them. These are all new to this agenda.
No, no, I don't think all of them are new at all. Couple of them are.
Yeah, a couple of them are.
Take them individually.
That's fine.
Well, we could have discussion individually, but vote on them as a group.
Yeah. I'm okay with that, too.
If you want them held out to vote specifically individually, right?
So the first one is.
You can move them all, and then we'll.
Okay, I move the following eight items. Item number one, payment for architectural services. Item number two, purchase of HVAC units. Item number three, purchase of replacement barrier gates at the high school. Item number four, high school window cleaning. Item number five, purchase of replacement fencing at Bethel Park High School. Item number six, exploratory excavation work at Bethel Park High School. Item number seven, purchase of carpet extractor. And item number eight, payment for engineering services.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Christensen. Comments, questions about these items?
So my question is actually on number six, the excavation process. There are three bids given to us. I'm guessing we're going with the one that's for thirteen, one?
That's what it says in the.
Correct.
Oh, was there a huge scope difference between the other two, or?
Everyone was explained to dig down twenty-five feet, and whatever measure you had to take to step that out to make it safe for shoring, that was called for. And in all three quotes, they were specked out between a ten-by-ten by at least twenty-four foot hole.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about any of the items?
Mr. Fierce. On five, fencing at the high school, is it more insight?
If you follow the driveway down from the athletic parking lot to behind the stadium, about halfway down that hill, the eight-foot-tall fence is actually starting to collapse on itself. And there, we also removed part of a cubbyhole area, and we're actually bringing that fence down to clean that entire area up itself and just have it a better-looking and more secure space.
Thank you, sir.
I'm assuming that the window cleaning is for outside?
Correct. It's something that our regular staff can't reach, nor do we have the tools to accomplish.
And are the replacement barrier gates going to be like in the same places?
Yes, they are directly replacing the old electric ones that were obviously years ago.
So, Mr. McCoslin, Mr. Fierce, I don't know who'd be answering this, but number two, the HVAC units, two-part question. First, do we know where they're manufactured? And the second one is, do we know what the lead times are on?
This is, when we discussed it last week, I believe they're going with the AON, AON?
AON.
Units, Mr. Kramer was involved in the specification. The cost is coming in slightly lower than we had anticipated, and the lead time is about ten weeks, I believe, is what I heard.
One of the reasons I asked about the manufacturer, I mean, I'm always in support of Buy American, but aside from that, being in the construction industry, I know a lot of things that are being supplied from overseas. They give you lead times, and you, they never hit the lead times.
They're, I believe, manufactured here in the United States.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Does that get, that ten weeks just puts us right on schedule? Dr. Walsh, just checking to see if.
The original.
Same follow-up I'm asking from last week.
Yes, this is actually gonna be a better product choice than what we had talked about last week, because the lead time is significantly shorter, so they'll be here sooner, which brings the whole project time up from what we originally projected to be about completing into the early winter.
Into the fall, yeah.
Right. We'll still have delays opening the gym. We're working on that. Dr. Jen Sammy's working on contingencies for rec teams that have to, that would normally use the gym floor, getting us to start the season. However, we need to straighten that piece out. You're working on that this week. I don't think we have any plans yet, but starting on it. And the HVAC units, they were gonna do all the rough-in work until delivery could, could happen, but I think we're gonna be able to do it all in one, one project.
Okay, and then the displacement of gym classes, we're working.
Correct.
Dr. Jen, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. I wasn't as worried much about rec. I know that's a revolving door, but I was more concerned about the gym classes and how we're going to do that on rainy days.
We're actually gonna use half of the gym. You know, part of the gym has flooring down, so they're gonna put that floor piece in early so that we can use that side while, while we're waiting for the flooring to arrive. So, plus, on nice days in the, in the fall, we're gonna go outside as much as possible. And just want to, Dr. Walsh's point, the other vendors were about twenty-two weeks, and we're now between eight and ten weeks, so it's definitely very significant. And the cost was much lower, and Kramer gave his blessing. He worked with them, and he made some adjustments with, with some of the gauges and so forth. And so it's, he's, I just spoke to him again today. He's very pleased with where it is right now.
Okay, and these are going on the roof? These are not.
On the roof.
We talked about.
Yes, not underneath inside, they're going up on the roof. And Haze Design has looked at the structural piece to ensure that there'll be a little bit more bracing added, but it's, it's able to hold those, those two units.
As long as Mr. Kramer and Ms. Fierce can fix it, I'm okay with that.
There you go.
The one thing that's not on here yet is the board's conversation last week about a commissioning agent, and so we're asking for proposals from two or three alternatives to tower engineering in the haze that would commission, in other words, inspect the product to make sure it's the one that was specified for the job.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on items one through eight under Facilities? Okay, Mr. McCoslin?
Voting is open. Motion carries, nine, oh.
Mr. Christensen, Finance.
Under the Finance Committee, item number one, I move to adopt the 2021-2022 General Fund Budget Resolution.
Second, I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nagel. Discussions or comments on this item?
Yeah, I'd like to start out, we faced some challenges that were imposed upon this board. When those challenges were imposed upon this board by prior board, it was also acknowledged that we would have to raise the millage rate to the index for the foreseeable future. I wanted to acknowledge the work that Mr. McCoslin's done with the zero-based budget to cut that window down, along with the unfortunate silver lining of COVID and, and grant money that we've had to help cut that window down. But as we move forward, I've stressed this, that if we don't raise taxes to the maximum index, we lose that baseline for next year. And if, if you look at the budget, we are still operating in a deficit and using general fund money to balance that. So if we don't keep pace, even though we'll be using general fund money, we'll continue to fall behind. So I applaud Mr. McCoslin and the budgeting process he brought to help narrow that gap. And I just wanted to take a little time to explain to the public why we are still raising taxes to the maximum index.
Yeah, I want to just take a minute before we vote to thank Ms. McCoslin also. You've done a fantastic job leading us through. And by the way, have you even hit your first-year anniversary yet?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So, first year taking us through the budget process was fantastic, brought in some great ideas that I believe will help us have a very accurate view of, of how the school district is running going through this year. I think the one slide that kind of tells us, even though in this, you know, going from last year to this year, we were doing a tax increase, when you look at the slides you had that goes back six years, and our millage rate is still less than it was then, what that tells me is that we are operating the school district in a financially responsible way. We're continuing, as our costs per unit increase, and they are, because of contractual costs, because of cost of supplies that we buy, costs are going up. But overall, we're managing those costs within the envelope of revenue or millage that we've had from six years ago. So I think that shows that the district is being run in a, in a responsible way while still trying to deliver the best education possible. So I wanted to thank you for that. I just wanted to see if I had any other notes here. I did want to also thank, you know, one thing that's helped us keep these costs under control over the last six years and keep them within this kind of the same envelope of total millage, total spending, is that we have been, for, for five or six years now, we've been going through this process of attrition, and as staff retire, which, if you think back to one of the other charts that you showed tonight, our staffing costs are seventy-five percent or so of our total expenses. So we can focus on cutting papers and paperclips and pencils and that kinds, those kinds of things, but it really doesn't have a huge impact. You know, of course, we should, but it doesn't have a huge impact. And so a lot of the savings come from cutting staff as, as, you know, as we go through this attrition process. And I think that's been a great process over the last five to six years, because it lets us land softly in terms of cutting staff without disrupting the quality of education. And so I think we're on a, you know, we're still on a great path. We're getting close to other districts that we benchmark ourselves against in terms of students-to-teacher ratio. We're still a little bit rich in that area, and so we have to continue to work hard to, you know, come down to a comparable level of, of staffing for the size of student population that we have. It'll get tougher, because these decisions and the solutions become tougher to find as we get closer to our goal of staffing level. But I want to thank the administration also across all buildings for working with us to make the adjustments to our staffing so we can achieve some of these goals. So again, thanks to you, especially Mr. McCoslin, for walking us through this process. I think this has gone just incredibly smooth with a very good result.
Mrs. Dobbs?
Yes.
Also, I'd like to thank Mr. McCoslin. Only the second time I sat in this process, and it was much more clear and understandable this time than the previous time. We were under a lot of stress these last two years, but one of the things I, I think, when going back from when I was elected and when we were running, is that, you know, we were able to keep our finances in line, yet we had made strides in improving our education process here. Some of the hires we have made and decided have been based on improving the education experience for our staff, our students. That was one of the outcry from our community a couple of years ago, was that decisions appear to be made for just financial purposes, not looking at the overall educational experience that our children in Bethel Park were having at that time. So I commend our board and our administration, is that recognizing that, you know, one of our goals, one of my goals, is to maintain level finances, yet at the same time, we strive on improving the education that our children are getting here. And I think we made good strides. We made some hires specifically for that purpose, and I commend administration reviewing everything, hearing us, hearing our, our community, so we can improve that educational experience for the students of Bethel Park. And yet still, maintain a budget that is reasonable, and again, as Mr. Christensen said and Mr. McCoslin said, our millage rate is still less than it was six years ago. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dobbs?
Yes.
I'd like to thank Mr. McCoslin and Dr. Walsh. Two things, we threw a couple of curveballs at you during this process, one of them being saying, oh, by the way, the student-to-teacher ratio in kindergarten to second grade should be, no, the limit of twenty, that had caused, you know, the administration to have to go back and look at things. The main goal being giving the students the best foundational education we can give them as Bethel Park residents. And going on to that with the reduction that happened, the telling slide that you put up, Mr. McCoslin, is where we rank compared to other districts in the area and all of us here sitting distressed, the best academics and know that people can move into this district and their millage rate is still not what it is in the comparable districts by a whole lot based on what you just told us, how much one mil is and get the best education, knowing we are striving to make sure that those classrooms meet the educational requirements and meet the needs and that kids can get that one-on-one attention, especially at the elementary level. And also, you know, the other thing I commend you on is we all kind of came and said, hey, we want to change some other things too and being able to have graduation outside, recognizing all of our students, having them all in here tonight, showing them that we value the students that make up our district. So thank you both.
I'd like to make a couple of comments. Mr. McCoslin, thank you so much for what you've done with the budget. Dr. Walsh, over the last three to four months, thank you for, you know, really working on establishing a culture here. I, I know that it takes time and, you know, we have a long way to go, but we could see progress already, so I thank you for that. And I'm also extremely excited about the strategic plan and all of our future goals. But the question is, you know, who do we want to be when we think of Bethel Park? And, you know, when I was running, I'm thinking we need to be that powerhouse in education. We need to definitely be that destination location for young families that, that want to come here. And that, that does take an investment. So I think the wise moves of Mr. McCoslin with our budget will allow us to do that in the future for the coming years. And I think with that money that we will invest in our children, especially in areas of reading, writing, arithmetic and problem-solving, this goes back to looking at K through twelve, looking at that scope and sequence, investing in that scope and sequence, making sure that if we want to be a STEAM powerhouse, we want to be the hub for STEAM, we, it will be an investment, but it's an investment for our children, it's an investment in our future. And I'm extremely excited to be part of that with a strategic plan. It, it's coming along, very excited. Thank you so much, Mr. McCoslin, thank you so much, Dr. Walsh.
Yeah, I agree with all of you, a lot of things to go around, but the, what I'm really excited about is moving forward. Three years ago, four years ago, five years ago, you know, sitting through board meetings, you didn't hear words like strategic plans and, or discussions necessarily about committees, curriculum committees, and I was very excited to hear tonight that these things are happening. And, and, you know, and Ms. Turner talked about, you know, keeping the numbers down low at the elementary. And Mr. Scousler talked about, you know, attracting young families into our district. Dr. Walsh and, and the team have put together and restructured administration that's going to help the whole process, K through twelve. A high school is going to have a new look and new feel. I think, you know, in most districts, most people ask, how's the high school, how's the high school? Nobody really asks, you know, how's, I don't know, William Penn second grade? You know, so, but, but just to know that we're putting a lot of time and effort into those elementary grades and it will show immediately as well as down the road with all the other changes that are positive. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to thank Mr. McCoslin for all of the workshops that he gave to the board so that everybody would have a good understanding of the budgeting process. Also, the fact that we're working on a strategic plan, we now know where our monies will be going and, and will be able to advise the taxpayers as to how well they're being utilized. So I think those are two good things that have come out of this process. And I want to thank you and thank Dr. Walsh for keeping us on track since he's come on board and I think that we can look forward to good budgets in the future with, you know, with judicial, good responsibility by the board.
Thank you. Any other comments about the budget?
I just wanted to make, thank you for all the nice comments, but like any good team, it's not me alone that makes it happen. I just, I'd have to thank my staff, the administrative team, the staffs at the building. They all put in a lot of hard work to get that budget put together, so it's never one person that's doing all by himself, but I have a great support system behind me. They really took to the new process and really jumped in with both feet, so I commend the whole team for making it happen. They did a great job.
Thank you. Okay, vote, voting?
Vote, maybe it's open, the voting is open. Motion carries eight one.
Item number two, under finance, I move to approve the commitment of the fund balance. I guess this is the, the, the new profile, the shifting of the fund balance.
I need a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spakusa, comments or questions about this?
I just have.
Only comment, this was the slide that Mr. McCoslin had in the, the deck before that showed the state of the fund balance of last year versus this upcoming year.
And I just have one comment. Upon moving the money or the, the funds out of the benefits into capital projects, if for some reason in the next three to five years, benefits go a rollercoaster ride, I guess is the best way to explain it, we can move those back, correct?
Correct, it just takes another motion from the board to recommit it.
Any other comments or questions?
Voting is open. Motion carries nine oh.
Ms. Turner?
I have moved to the third and final reading for revisions to policy one to two, extracurricular activities. And this is to fall in line with the changes with PSBA.
So are we voting on this tonight or are we?
It should be the third and final reading, but it should be okay.
We just didn't put it in consent because?
Right, because we needed to read it first.
Okay, any comments or questions?
Second.
Oh, thank you. Seconded by Mr. Christensen, any comments or questions?
I actually just want to thank Dr. Walsh and Mary Beth. The last two sets of readings, Mary Beth has done the majority of the lift in this. So thank you very much. I mean, I, we talked about them coming along, but Mary Beth has done a majority of the redlining of all of this. So that is huge help to all of us.
Okay, and she's referring to Mary Beth Gregg, who is the administrative assistant or? I forget the exact.
To the superintendent in the board.
To Dr. Walsh, anyway, thank you, Mary Beth.
Yes, yeah, superwoman.
Okay, so voting?
Voting is open.
Are there any call-ins?
Yes, I have one.
Okay. Because I don't see any in the response.
I don't have any other comments.
I have Sharon Jannasack on the line, Sharon, you should be able to be heard.
Hi, this is Sharon Jannasack, four-three-one-four, Am Street. I wanted to call and say thank you so much to everyone who's in the room tonight. There's been so much hard work all year to get where we are tonight, thank you. And as Mr. McCoslin so aptly pointed out, also, thank you to everyone who isn't in the room tonight. Because you're right, Mr. McCoslin, it's a team of people. And thank you to everyone who has worked so hard to make education the focus in our district and to be willing to do what is necessary to improve our education and give the students of Bethel Park the quality education. I appreciate it so deeply, I was so excited to hear about the Christmas and the work that they're doing in science and social studies and really looking at updating our textbooks. I'm so excited about the strategic plan and process that Dr. Walsh has brought to our district. Thank you so much. It is an eye-opening and invigorating experience. As a member of the community, I appreciate so much everyone's willingness to hear from us. So I just wanted to call and say thank you. I also wanted to say congratulations to Dr. O'Rourke and to Mrs. Sutton. Hopefully I will see you at some point before you go, but I'm not sure when you're going. So I wanted to say thank you and good luck to both of you all. Thank you so much and I appreciate all of the work you are all doing on behalf of the children of our community. It's noticed and it's appreciated, thank you.
Thank you. Any other calls?
No other calls.
And I still do not see any comments on the response sheets. Are there any board comments?
I would actually like to just say thank you, thank you, thank you for restarting the curriculum committees. I know that some of us have sat in open houses a couple of years ago and heard about how it's been ten years and ten years and ten years and these books are really old. So thank you, that is kudos to everybody in this building and thank you to all of the teachers that have volunteered to participate in the end, the education. The time you're putting in now is going to move mountains for our kids in the educational world, so. And it's going to be state-of-the-art.
Thanks, Janet.
I have a couple of comments, unless somebody else, anybody else? So over the past year and a half, this board, I think, has managed to overcome a few obstacles, starting with the repercussions from the tax reduction voted on in June of 2019. But since then, I think our vision has changed to a renewed focus on instruction, achievement and long-term planning. Last year during the difficult times of COVID, we created nine goals that we will revisit during our July and August meetings this year. Instead of reacting to issues as they come up or came up, we have been able, by creating these goals, to see a purpose for our decisions, a purpose for making our decisions, both administratively and at the school board level. For me, one of the most important among those goals was to create the strategic plan committee so that we can plan forward for five-plus years rather than just cobbling together yearly plans year after year. Over this past year, we've also hired a new superintendent, fabulous, and addressed an administrative restructuring. All of these decisions are intended to move Bethel Park forward in the future in a positive and uplifting way. We want improvement to incur in all areas and have defined those areas in our subcommittees of curriculum, instruction, curriculum and instruction, facilities, finance, student experience, human resources and diversity, equity and inclusion. The budget that we passed tonight has been carefully constructed from the bottom up. Ironically, even though COVID has been such a negative force on our educational system, because of the COVID funds, we have not had to deplete our fund balance as much as we anticipated. But we still have to dip into it this year to balance our budget. Keeping a healthy fund balance is key for our path forward in trying to get back to our levels of, of a previous time, both academically, financially and curriculum-wise. So I want to thank our administrators from the top down for putting this together, for moving us forward. And in particular, Mr. McCoslin and his team for the work that you've put into this budget. I want to thank you all. Any other comments? Okay, I'd like a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Moved against your Nagel and seconded by Ms. Turner?
Voting is open.
Yes.